Okay, if I could have everybody's attention, we're gonna get this special library workshop moving. I believe it's written on the published agenda that public comment will be accepted in written form, either by email or throughout the meeting, and Jeff is gonna speak about that in just a moment, and we would ask that everybody, if you want to ask a question, please frame it as a question. We have heard a lot of statements, we continue to hear a lot of statements, and those are all under consideration. We're not ignoring anything that has come in so far. Now we're looking at how we want to progress. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff Parker to give us a little bit more background and information.
Well, Rick is gonna hand out cards, and for those people who need pens, some town-owned pens, which, yes, you've helped purchase, but let's have them back at the end. All right, first things first, can everybody hear, everybody up here? Okay, great. Secondly, Bill, I thought it would be a good opportunity right now just to talk about the meetings that are coming up, and who we have invited, and who has said that they will put up with this. So our next meeting has to do with physical aspects of the two different sites, and to ask questions that have come up since the Ad hoc Library Committee has made their determination, and new questions, old questions, et cetera. So we will have in the room on Wednesday, two days from now, Mr. Tom Albertson has, we've not confirmed with him, but he is a building, general contractor supervisor type of guy. Bill Lane and Will Gartley, who are on the town payroll as consultants for engineering, they'll be here. Mr. Eric Denny, who is here tonight as well, will provide continuity with Ad hoc Library Committee. Keith Rose will be unable to make it, but he'll be answering some questions that we've formed for him, and so we'll be presenting information from Keith Rose, and he is the facilities director of the, excuse me. Yeah, oop, nope, nope, nope.
They're calling each other?
Nope, nope, everything's on. Sorry, that's a friend of mine in Colorado, just had an operation, so we'll be rude and hang up on him. Keith Rose is the facility director of...
Really like you, don't they?
Of the school department. Dave Nazarov, who is a general contractor in town, works on big projects, he also was a special advisor to the steering committee early on, if I'm correct. He'll be here as a builder. Dick Reed is a maybe for the meeting on Wednesday. Alan Mitchell, another builder, well-known to people in Rockport, is here tonight as well. Ah, there he is. He's gonna see how much pain these guys get. And Peter Gross, an architect, who is now with Phi Home Designs, will be here. And that's all next Wednesday, so it'll be a very crowded table facing us. The following Tuesday, the 7th of February, will be sort of the abstract, what's the most recent thinking in urban planning, design of villages, et cetera, et cetera, that, in no particular order. Jane LaFleur will be here, and she's, of course, well-known to most of us in talking about things like walkable towns and stuff like that. Jamie Francamano, who's our own planning director. Kerry Leishman will be here to answer any questions that fall into his purview in terms of land value and density and things like that. Terry Dewan, who is very well-known in the state, will be coming up to talk about, A, his 45 years of experience in the field, but also, he mostly hangs out in southern Maine, so he'll bring us the perspective of some of the towns that are similar to us, who have perhaps made some mistakes and/or perhaps made some good choices. Also included in that meeting, which is the, what does the village look like, feel like? How far is, you know, one end of a village to another? Taylor Allen, Martha White, and Tyler Smith will hopefully be here, and you may have just read that they have just purchased a bunch of property on Route 1, and it's somewhat adjacent to the RES site, and they will be giving their thoughts, or they'll be learning as well, but they bought that magnanimously because they did not want that part of the town to become an eyesore. So they actually are very, very proactive, very, very pro-Rockport, and while they may have a vision, I think that this will serve as a good back-and-forth to help them in what they may do.
Have they actually received an invitation?
They have received an invitation and accepted. No. Taylor has received and accepted. Martha and Tyler are their own individuals, and we've reached out to them. So those are the three meetings that have people coming to them. The fourth meeting will probably be an extended conversation among the board, just discussing what we've heard and what each of us feel, and the task at hand is, not to belabor it, but the task at hand is to, is five individuals who are trying to get up to speed, and not necessarily be the smartest people in town, but be among the best-informed people in town, so that we can, with our own particular matrix of, you know, this is important to me, that's important to him, all the way downline, hopefully be representative of the town, but it's, you can beat us up rather than your neighbor if you don't like what we end up saying. But the fourth meeting will probably be conversational in that respect, and we wouldn't be taking a vote until an official, normally scheduled meeting. Does that sound right to everybody?
Well, I'd point out that we have an additional meeting coming up. It's not really related to the library, but it's the ongoing challenge from the Select Board in Camden to us to go down a very fast toboggan shoot on the 11th of February, and it has nothing to do with the library, but I had to put the pitch in there anyway.
It's not a meeting of the minds, it's a meeting of the butts.
Well, we may accomplish more.
Yeah.
You're thinking of elimination?
Just tout it. It's supposed to be the first set of races right after the lunch hour on Saturday, but that's all I'm gonna say about it. I'm still wearing last year's sweatshirt. I've been just ordered to stand up, turn around, see, right there. This was last year. We were signed, sealed, and delivered. This year, we may just be rock you. But we haven't decided on anything. That's enough for that. We will now, Jeff?
Yes, so the idea is hopefully that among the five of us, we will be asking all the questions that you want to ask, and hopefully you'll say, oop, you already answered that, and cross it off, but if at the end of each of our segments of questions that we haven't covered, something that's near and dear to you, please write it down, and Rick will run around and pick those up periodically.
Can I ask a question? Are the questions from the audience that we'll be taking only specifically related to what we're talking about tonight, so if there's an architectural question, we would postpone that until our architectural meeting.
If somebody wants to hand in an architectural question, we will put that in a little envelope that says, "Open in two days." It's kinda like Christmas.
And we'll entertain questions from the live stream feed also.
As well, on the same, yeah.
For those who are watching at home, again, it has to be a question, not a comment.
How many of them?
There's nine people watching so far.
Excellent, okay.
The evening's early.
Hi, honey.
Should we begin with an explanation for the people who are here and people who are at home of what it is we did at the last meeting, and what we've, maybe it was two meetings ago, what we've asked these folks here to be here for and to prepare for?
Let's let them jump in. I mean, yeah, there's some presentations to be made, and they'll have some questions.
Let's move into the presentation. We've asked the members who had been on the capital campaign committee to come in and address us this evening. It's not an active committee at this time because of the vote. We suspended the effort in trying to raise funds for the library, because frankly, we don't know where we're going. But they do have valuable insights as to the process that we should go through, what we should be looking at doing to make the capital campaign function better, you know, for the next go-around, you know, assuming we can get to that point, and maybe even as important as to what we shouldn't be doing, which could jeopardize it. But with that, I'm gonna introduce Charlton Ames and Joan Welch, who have both been, were both active, and very active, in our capital campaign, and would you come on up?
Sure.
Excuse me.
Usually it's ladies first, but...
Go ahead.
Can I ask, before you start, are there other members of your committee here tonight?
Yes.
Pat Messler. I guess that's it, actually.
And Pat, as a member of the committee, would be very welcome to come up to the table as well.
You wanna come up?
Yeah, Pat.
We have a place for you.
Yeah, we do.
Folks, this is all unrehearsed.
Yes, it definitely is.
Well, what we might do is, it might be a bit repetitive, but talk about what makes a successful campaign, then go into why we thought we could raise $2 million, and I think all of us have slightly different views of why we thought we'd be successful, and then recommendations, which I would think all three of us might have for you, plus, well, do's and don'ts, let's leave it at that. This might be repetitive, but I think we've already said that to have a capital campaign that's going to be successful, it has to, they're always project-specific, it always revolves around a project, so you need an important project, and you need a project that is going to provide a substantial amount of benefit. So important project, plenty of benefit, and then, most importantly, you need people behind that project that are willing to go out and ask donors for money. And those two things have to be aligned, because donors are looking for projects that are meaningful, and they're also looking for who's behind the project, who's really passionate about the project and willing to make the ask, because volunteers are really key in this regard. You won't have professionals raising money for you. They can organize you, they can help you with case statements, they can do a lot of things that are beneficial, but they will not raise the money. So that's what you need to know really about capital campaigns from a general standpoint. In our case specifically, we had a really important project. There's nothing more important than Rockport's library. It tells you who you are as a community. I get very passionate about myself, myself, I get passionate about libraries, not that I use them all the time, but I know what they do for a community. And I was very enthusiastic about our committee that came together, and I felt we had people that were willing and able to go out and ask for donations, and the initial work that we did was quite encouraging. So we felt that, in that regard, we were in good shape. But also, you can't, you really can't raise the money unless you have people that are professional in the sense that they are gonna make the project happen, and Dick Reed was so qualified, and such a nice man, willing to do anything we wanted as a committee, and so to have him explaining the benefits of the library layout, the programmatic content of the library, made me feel that I could do my job as a volunteer and go out and raise the money. Particularly with Ben, with Dick, you had this combination that was so collaborative, and it was so exciting to see those two work together and talk together, and Ben's enthusiasm made me believe that putting him in front of donors and explaining why this library was gonna work...
Which we did.
Was so powerful. It was really, really powerful. That really gave me a lot of comfort that we could raise the money. Now, there were concerns, I think from day one, we were always concerned that the vote had to be really positive, we really needed the citizens of Rockport to want that library, and if the citizens of Rockport didn't want the library, you can't raise the money. So that was always a concern. We were concerned about parking, that was a real problem, and the neighbors' view of changing Lime Rock Street, so we, you know, we did have concerns, but overall, I think we really could've raised the money. I'll just...
Yeah, I'd like to, I agree with everything Charlton said. I think what's really important is that it's a really clear definitive project, that people can look at, understand, so it's not a vague idea, or, you know, something that's generalized, but that it is a clear proposal. And then I think what's important after that, for fundraising, is to spend some time, which Charlton did more than the rest of us, but to spend some time talking to people about their enthusiasm for it, what they thought about it, give feedback, and I would say, in the next iteration of this, that's going to be a very important phase of any kind of fundraising, and that's called, in fundraising terms, a feasibility study, whether or not it's formalized through a consultant, or it's done more informally, which is what we had started to do. Either way, you can't guarantee an amount of money, and you can't assign amount of money to be raised. It really is depending on what the community may be willing to do, and that's what a feasibility study would show. And so you need a very clear project. I would encourage you to take time, I think June is much too soon. You need time for the fundraising side of it, to ascertain what really can be raised, even before, I think, you put a bond issue out. Let's find out what the community would support, and that will inform how much of a bond would be needed. Once you have a project and a specific amount of money identified, I think you need time, then, to see how much support is there in the community for that. Then that will determine how much the bond would need to be. The other thing in terms of timing is, I think, and I was a proponent of putting it on the November ballot, but I think that was too soon. I think a lot of people had a lot of questions and a lot of misunderstandings about the cost of the project. People lumped in a lot of things to it that actually were not included in the total amount. There was a lot of misunderstanding. I think, you know, many people got out and advocated for it, but I don't think as many people got out working for it as should have, or it could have. So it could've been better organized, and I really wanna thank the Ad hoc Committee, they worked so hard, and I think there was an expectation that they were gonna also do all the promotion and marketing, and that was too much to ask of them. I think we needed Select Board, those of us, doing more than we did. So I would encourage you to think about the timing. I think it's going to be really important to make sure all the answers, or all the questions are answered. I know, when I knocked on some doors, there were people who voted, had already voted and voted against it because they didn't understand there was expanded parking. I mean, parking is a big issue, and this was an elderly woman, and I explained to her that we'd added, you know, that there had been added spaces, and she didn't realize that, and so I think those are the, those are the only things. Oh, there has been discussion about, Brenna and I have talked about the aspirational funding side of things. I think it's always good to have a wish list of things you'd like to have included that aren't included in the actual plan, but I think you wanna be careful not to have that be a part of the whole proposal. That needs to come later. Those are things that, yeah, they would be great to have, but that's not part of this campaign, because we don't want competition for raising the basic dollars that's gonna be needed to make the project successful. So I think that's...
I'm gonna ask one thing, that really, lack of knowledge, I think, and this really bothered me, when I got out and I talked to people, they really didn't understand that compromises were made, and because Dick Reed was so skilled at having multiple uses for singular space, people didn't realize that the building had been reduced by, if I remember correctly, 1,400 and some square feet because of multiple uses, and when I would tell them that, they would say, oh, well, that's a nice compromise, that's a reasonable compromise, we're not just building a Taj Mahal, this is something that's been thought through, and that made sense. But very few people knew that, for some reason, we just didn't get the story out. Pat, maybe give one...
Well, as we all did, my effort in trying to promote the vote be a yes vote, took the form of going to door-to-door houses, and almost entirely in western Rockport, because it was an area that I wasn't familiar with, I went with a partner, and we both knocked and talked to people, and again and again, we were surprised, as has already been said, how many people really didn't know what was going on, and, you know, some of us are sort of news junkies, so we not only read the newspaper, but we listen to the radio, and we turn on the evening news, and then we read, you know, go on Penn Bay Pilot, or whatever, whatever is the source, and even with that, people just didn't seem to understand. Time and time again, someone would say, what, it's not gonna be at RES? And I said, no, no, that's last year's discussion, or, how can I figure out what my share is gonna be? And I would go through the calculation that I think you guys came up with, and, you know, it made sense, but it's very exhausting to do that, one house at a time, in a town even as small as Rockport. So we need to, when we get to the point of actually putting it on the ballot for, the bond on the ballot for a vote, we need to have a whole effort to inform and educate Rockportites, many different ways of going about it, almost as many as you can think of, because who knows how people are gonna get this information? A lot of people are very excited about the thought of a new library, getting there, how do I get there, and where do I park my car, if you come as far as West Rockport, Vinyl Street, or any of those streets over there? That's their reality, and, you know, I've been saying that for a while, so I'll stop.
Well, to finish up on recommendations, we've really been making recommendations, but I wanna make sure that we hit a few highlights from my point of view, since we don't have a committee anymore. Don't give up on the quality of the library. The library really needs to be a quality library, and I'll tell you how I would recommend that you know that, is by seeing Ben's enthusiasm. So if the meter doesn't get that far, then there's something wrong, because Ben's gonna be raising a lot of money with the people that go with him to make ass, and so his enthusiasm and his staff's enthusiasm, that's really key. I think you might consider making donations yourselves, because, once again, people give to people, and when we're able to say, as volunteers going out and raising money, that all the Select Board have made a donation, that's very powerful. The other two recommendations is, I don't think you can give up on the commitment, a significant commitment, from the taxpayers, because donors, private donors, they're gonna wanna see their money leveraged, they're gonna wanna see that there's a significant commitment from the taxpayers of Rockport for a library, that they really, really want that library, and so I don't think you can give up on that. And then finally, I guess you're not hung up on Lime Rock Street, because if we're, if one Lime Rock isn't big enough for our library, if our library is perceived as too big for that site, if the neighbors don't like the treatment of Lime Rock Street, really, the Bock's, it's not the end of the world if the property reverts to the Bock family. Mary Louise Bock was probably, according to anybody who knows the history of Camden/Rockport, the most generous donor that we've ever had to this town, and so for us to celebrate her contributions, which were many to this area, by allowing the property to revert to her heirs, and celebrate her, there's nothing wrong with that, and who knows what they will do. At the very least, the property will be back at the tax roll, so that's not a bad outcome, necessarily. So that's it, as far as my recommendations.
Jump into questions?
Yes, go right ahead.
This is to no one in particular, any of you, feel free to jump in. It was observed to me that greater emphasis was placed on the total cost of the most recent proposal, as opposed to the public burden portion, and that perhaps that total cost amounted to something which seemed exorbitant. Did you observe any of that? Do you share any of that assessment? Did you hear that? And is there anything we can do about that?
I mean, I was operating under the understanding it was a $4 million, the cost was $4 million, and I think, yes, I have talked, I did talk with some people who thought that was too much. I also heard from people who thought, you know, it wasn't big enough. I think it's very hard, I think there were so many reasons why people voted no. That was certainly one of them, but I can't say, I don't know whether or not that was the overriding issue. I think there were multiple.
Ken? Oh, go ahead. I'd have to agree with Joan. I was really, for the people I talked to, and explaining the 50/50 seemed reasonable to everybody that I talked to, and really, $2 million to get a brand-new library for a taxpayer, nobody that I talked to thought that that was a bad deal at all, so. I was, I think there were so many reasons that it's...
Well, I think it was, to some people, yeah. No question.
Okay, I'll follow up to your follow-up.
So Charlton, before you had said, don't give up on the significant contribution of the taxpayers. Does 50/50 seem appropriate with perhaps scaled-down amounts, or, gut feeling?
It's certainly just a guess, but 50/50 has a nice sound to it, it's symmetrical. But what's significant? Obviously, let's just try a scale here. 10% wouldn't be enough, 30...
Sorry, 10% of?
If the taxpayers paid 10% of the building, that wouldn't be enough. 30%, 40%, 50%, then if they paid 80%, that would be too much, so you'd sort of, you work your way into a comfortable...
Okay.
Owen, you had a follow-up as well?
Yes, and just curiously, did you all go on knock-on doors primarily to fundraise, or primarily to just disseminate information?
Vote yes.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, maybe you were hearing that it wasn't that expensive 'cause you were looking for potential donors?
No, we weren't asking for money.
And I was more curious of kind of what you had heard out to West Rockport.
Yeah, I'd just like to make one point that was hammered home to us in talking with professional fundraisers, which we did quite a bit of, because we were intending to hire someone who would help us with this process. As Charlton said, this person is not gonna go out and ask people for money, but they were gonna help us with our roadmap and getting our committee, and doing all of the many, many things that you have to do. And to a person, they all... And to a person, they all said, you have to be able to look at your potential donor in the eye and say, yes, the town of Rockport really wants this. And the only way that's going to happen is if you get a resounding vote. It has to be, you have to have something to ask them for money for. And in, in our case, it was the library. And we were poised so that if the vote was resounding, we knew what we wanted to do next as far as the process. But you don't go out and ask people for money for maybe an idea.
Well, then I guess that brings me to a follow-on. Charlton, you had said that the, the initial kind of feedback that you were getting was encouraging. Were there some commitments already made or was it just by a conversational way that you came across that information? Or what was encouraging that led you to believe that $2 million was an attainable goal?
Well, yeah, you have to, you have to make a judgment. And I, I was, of our committee, I must say, I was the most aggressive about going out and, and talking about, would people be interested in making a donation? So I guess I'm the one that should answer the question. I, I, I think of the people I talked to, the best way to put it, I felt pretty comfortable that they would all make donations at some level. And, and we had two lead donations that were available, contingent upon passing the vote. So it's a judgment call.
No firm commitments other than those two.
Well, and, and none of the, none of the commitments, quote, were commitments because they were all contingent upon passage of, of the vote.
Ken?
I want to ask about the vote timing because you talked about that and floated the idea that perhaps June is too soon. But on the other hand, one of the requirements for a successful campaign is a resounding support from the community for, for the very important project. So I guess it's a little bit of a chicken and egg problem. When do you have the vote? When, as a capital campaign committee, when do you need that vote and how much work should we do before we have a vote? So I'm, I'm trying to feel that out a little bit because it seems like you have, we have some competing interests going there as far as the timing of the vote is concerned.
Well, what I, what I, the way I'm thinking about it is if we had a firm proposal, you all make your recommendation, the size, the, the place, the cost, then, and, and the thinking that you have about the percentage, is it 50/50? Is it, you know, what is it? Then to me, that, that gives us a chance to do feasibility, a, a, a chance to float the idea to prospective donors to see if we could even raise whatever the amount was that you would feel should be privately raised. If it's 50%, it's 50%. If it's, you know, whatever. Then that would, then that would give us an idea of, is this realistic? I have done feasibility studies before where they've said, you're, you're, there's not, the, it's not out there for you to raise that much. You need to scale back the amount that you could raise. Then that would be important before it went to the voters for a bond. Then once it goes to the voters, when there's a commitment made about what is needed for the bond and then what would be needed for private fundraising, then that's when you do a full-court press for all of us to, in various ways, inform the voters about the importance of, of a yes vote. And then, once we get the bond, then we start the fundraising. We couldn't start the fundraising until there's a vote by the people.
So, just to make sure I understand then.
It's a chicken and two eggs.
Yeah, there's a few eggs along.
Well, it's not really.
But just to make sure I understand, so then we have to ourselves in this process to come up with a project that's fairly well-defined.
Concrete plan.
With a reasonably well-defined total cost. And then the capital campaign committee would need time to do a feasibility study before we go to vote.
Yes, that would be my recommendation. And this, we haven't talked about this as a committee. This is my own perspective on what would.
Well, I'm happy to hear from the others too, because it's, it's a critical question.
Well, well, actually, what we did this last time around from, from a fundraising standpoint, I, I think some of our committee was uncomfortable that we didn't do more feasibility work. And so we were pressed to come up with, with, with a figure, which we did. I felt perhaps a little more comfortable than some other people on the committee, but it's, it's still a judgment call and we were able to proceed because we did have a concrete plan. We had a skilled, we had a skilled architect. And I did some due diligence on Dick Reed, which made me even more comfortable because every time Dick Reed has a project, he produces value and he sticks to budgets. So that, from a fundraising standpoint, was, was really important. Because the worst thing you can have is, is the type of capital campaign where all of a sudden you're asked to raise another 500,000, which we, we felt, I felt, it wouldn't happen with Dick Reed.
I mean, I, I'm not necessarily, we have to have a formal feasibility study, but we do need some time, as we had last time, to talk to people to see is this realistic? Can, do we really think we can raise the goal that the select board has set for us and that we've, we think we could raise? You need some reality check about if that's possible. Because we don't want to have a, a bond passed and then never be able to raise the match, you know? That would mean we would go years without putting a, you know.
Brendan had a question, then you, Jeff.
So this, this ties into both the feasibility study and the desire for resounding support from the community. I think everyone on the board, but I invite you all to disagree with me, but I think everyone on the board has endorsed this idea of, of only working toward that, that which we believe will, will get that kind of enthusiasm. And at least I personally feel that that means some measure of reduction in the budget relative to the last proposal. But I hear what you're saying about the feasibility study. You don't know until you really go and study it. So my question to you is, do you reject that assessment that in the interest of increasing the enthusiasm and, and resulting support for the bond, that we should reduce the budget? Do, do you agree with that or do you reject it? And, and I, and I recognize that we're, that, that I in particular am operating in a data-poor environment here. So I am, I'm very wary about arbitrarily reducing too far.
Yeah, I guess that would be where I would come down, is I'd be really concerned about, in an effort to pass the vote, you create a situation that people are going to look at and say, that's not what we need.
My hope is that the people to your right are going to hold us to task and help prevent us from doing that.
Fine balance, what's too much and what's too little.
Right, I mean.
As Charlton said, don't compromise on the quality.
Don't compromise on the quality because a lot of those very generous, public-spirited philanthropists that we're hoping to become good friends with are going to say, you open the doors, that's not going to be adequate. Why would I want to support something that's going to be less than what the town needs? Not just for yesterday and not just for next week, but for the next several years going forward. And that kind of planning is common with these sorts of things. Obviously, nobody has a crystal ball, but we do have an idea about some things, about growth and allowing, not necessarily building it, but allowing a place where you could expand if that time happens. That's just being responsible.
I, I hear the danger of not providing the value that, that Charlton has, has raised. Not, you know, that, that, an adjustment in that direction, you run the risk of not providing enough value to the community. I still would love to hear each of your assessments as to the general direction of reduction of the budget. Do you endorse that or reject it or neither?
I, I think that's one, that was one of the clear messages. No, I, I think some adjustment downward needs to be made. I would just caution about how far down you go, you know, which is, I think Pat's.
I don't pretend to know how to do this. It's just a trend.
Well, there, there, I gave you a test. Ben's a test.
Yep.
If Ben and the staff say, if they're lukewarm, that's, that's, that's a big red flag. And the other thing to remember, we're trying to grow as a community, a community intergenerationally. We're, we're trying to include in our library, children, young adults, adults, retirees. We're, we're trying to accommodate quite a few needs. And if we can do it with a, with a lesser budget, great. I would certainly, it'll make everybody's task easier.
Jeff, you?
Yeah, I'm going to build, the great news is, is that these guys are taking all my questions, so that's perfect. I love it. Several months ago, Charlton, you were over there, the two of you, Charlton and Joan, were over, standing there at the microphone. And you basically gave me the impression, you, you gave it to me in two ways. It was a caveat, don't you dare ask us to raise more than $2 million, but we think we can raise $2 million. And I took that as a gut check feasibility study. Given what we've learned and given the direction that we're going in here with hopefully a, a preternaturally huge amount of information going to people who otherwise might not have known about what's happening, do you still think that 1.5 to 2 is a reasonable goal for private fundraising?
Well, you got to remember where, where we started with, that every capital campaign is project-specific.
Depends on what.
So it really depends on, on, on the project that you're trying to raise the money for.
And that will also determine, I think, who steps up to be on the development committee and the fundraising committee.
Yeah, speaking of chicken and eggs, I mean, you're sort of asking us to come up with the money before you even know what it is you want us to sell.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're telling you again and again and again, no, you got to come up with a project before we can take it out and say, hey, this is a really good project. Would you, you know, there's a lot of enthusiasm that has to go in there.
Can we get a close-up of that?
But, but it's not, it's not that hard in this sense, that if all of you are willing to make a donation to the project and, and Ben is excited and his staff is excited, you know you're on the right track.
Yeah, I think, you know, when I go back and think of the organizations I've worked for and we've done capital campaigns, we have scoped out what we really wanted to do and we've, what we felt was right for the organization. Then we went out and we tested it with our donors. Does this sound like a good idea? No? Okay, well, would, you know, what would you change? Whatever. So I think you need to do exactly what you're doing. Do your best work. Think of all the feedback you've gotten. Take that into consideration. Give us your best idea of what you think is best for the town. And then we can vet it with not only ourselves, but with other people. I mean, I'm not speaking that, I'm not guaranteeing we're going to be at the table to do that, but whoever does it, it gives them then that opportunity to do the test, rev up some enthusiasm hopefully. So I just say, it really is in your lap. Do your best work. You know, that's what it takes to have a good, strong proposal that we can then think about, vet, discuss and.
And, and we're going to need to try to get to that very shortly, but Ken, you've been quiet on this.
I was going to say, your comment about, you know, you do the work and then you go out and you test it. And we had a test in November and we fell a little short.
On a specific?
On, on a specific project, a well-defined project that had some enthusiasm, and we fell a little bit short. And for me, you know, in talking to people afterwards, post-mortem so to speak, the biggest objection I heard was simply the cost. And so I think that's why we, as Brendan said, we're sort of moving in the direction of scaling back the cost a little bit, but as Charlton says, without sacrificing the quality. So to some extent, I think we've done some feasibility work. Obviously, we have a new project, a group such as yours, and we hope that you'll be willing to serve again. You'll have to do some feasibility again with new drawings in hand and a new project and come out and, and then report back to us and say, yes, we can do it or no, we can't.
I think that's a good assessment.
So the flip side of us asking you what you can do for us is asking you what we can do for you. What did you not have, aside, aside from buy-in and time to educate and all those good things that you guys have mentioned, is there anything specifically that you would want to, if, if you personally and collectively were to come back to form a, a capital campaign committee, that you would want from this board that you haven't already mentioned?
Stronger letter of support when the time comes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's been mentioned.
One, one thing that I might mention, that if, because there was a time, several months ago, when you met as a board and you were talking among yourselves about whether or not you would give the campaign committee the limitation that they had, two years within which to raise this money or else the whole thing was going to be thrown out and money was going to be sent back. And I, I was astounded that, A, that was the first time I had heard that thought because that's not usually the way capital campaigns work. And I guess what I would say is, if you are entertaining these kinds of notions that are going to have a gigantic impact on that committee that's been tasked with doing that job, please talk to the committee first.
To, to be fair, that wasn't the board that came up with that. That was a recommendation from a citizen.
And we, we pretty quickly shot it down.
Well, and we, as I recall, I think we did ask some folks on the committee, we did ask if, if that was. We, we thought it might be, actually might be helpful and that, and that it might help, you know, if people knew that, you know, yes, we have this great project and we have a time limitation on raising the funds. And I, I remember, I think I asked, I can't remember whether I asked Charlton or Joan, I asked somebody and, and was told on no uncertain terms, no, it wouldn't be helpful. So that, we did have the discussion, but, but we did check with people.
So strategic alignment?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, because you've got all of these different committees. You're now what used to be the ad hoc committee and you're looking to have a, a fundraising committee. And eventually, you're going to need, need to morph into a planning committee for the actual, you know, the real drawings. And I think it needs to be sort of well-balanced.
And I agree, by the way, I will commit to making a donation. I, I wasn't asked the last time around. I would have said, I will make, I don't know how much, but I, I would definitely make a donation. And you're absolutely right, having been involved with, with other organizations and doing fundraising, the board has to be fully on board.
It doesn't matter what level, just saying that.
Exactly, that's right. And I've been in other situations before.
Is there a sub-bronze level?
Yes, there is.
Happy to do the sub-bronze level.
For you all, there's a naming opportunity.
But it is correct, and I've been told that by professional fundraisers before. It doesn't matter how much, because for some board members, you know, $10 maybe all they can do and other board members may be able to give quite a bit more. But to be able to say that 100% of your board donates is critically important.
Yeah. Rick, do you have some questions that we wanted to address at this point?
Give them a minute to read them.
Up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are what I collected.
So while we're reading those, I'm just going to ask a follow-up on that.
That's architectural.
It strikes me that it would have been possibly worse for us to have passed a ballot by five votes than have, you know, than, than, than what actually happened.
That's for later in the evening.
Is there anything that we can or should do that would be meaningful if that happens? Anything in a planning way to, I mean, if you had had.
You know, let's not invite trouble. Mind told me that. Let's not invite trouble. Let's, let's plan for what we think is.
Positive people, positive people.
Yeah, and, and trust that we find the magic spot that our town can support. I think that's what we want.
So there was, some of the questions that came in are more appropriate for the architectural elements and what have you. But there was a question that I'm going to try and put into a non-editorial fashion. Were, do you think that the fundraising efforts could have been hampered and in the future might be hampered by roadside signs that don't have an attribution? You know, this is paid for by so-and-so or what have you. Does that undermine, does that undermine?
Well, I don't know if it undermines, I just think that's bad citizenship myself. I, you know, all political campaigns require a signature. I, you know, all political campaigns require a signature, who's sponsoring that? And I just think that's common respect. You know, people are, we live in a wonderfully open society. And, and, and having, you know, having your voice heard is important, but it's also important, I think, to name who the sponsors are of whatever the opinion is. Personally, I don't know if it helped or hurt.
One question that I hate to ask, but I have to ask, because it's one of the thorniest issues that we have to deal with, and that is, in your experience in going out and speaking with people about donating, was there any difference at all between the two sites under consideration, the One Lime Rock site and the RES site? Would you, did you find any difference in fundraising capability for one site over the other, or not?
You were only asking.
We didn't have a choice.
Back again to-
We had the project.
That's the way it works. You've got a project, and it's got a benefit, and that's what you're gonna raise money for. And it's not a, would you be more interested in something else? Because all you're doing is destroying your-
Well, I understand, but I'm just wondering if you heard any, any comments. I mean, Pat did mention that she had had people say, gee, I thought it was gonna be at the RES site. And I don't, from a fundraising point of view, I'm just trying to determine is there an advantage to one site over another.
That was more around the vote, but I would say there were some people that we knew did not support the village because they wanted it RES, so we didn't go and talk to them. Or that we, you know, might have later, but we certainly didn't initially. You know, I mean, that was, yeah.
Ken, I will just follow up and say that there were some people that I know for sure voted no on the vote, and it was because they strongly felt that the town was making a mistake to design a building at One Lime Rock Street. They thought that the other thing that wasn't in the running was a much better option. And so that's how they voted. Whether or not they would have followed that up with not making a donation of any amount is anybody's guess. But one thing we need is a lot of enthusiasm.
Absolutely.
I, I would say the three things I heard was that it was either at the, and these were not, these are not in order, these are like equal things. It was in the, not at the RES site, it was too big, or it cost too much money. I think those were the three main, or parking, there was parking in there too.
Parking was rolled into RES, because that was what was driving a lot of people to consider the RES site. But the other thing was, there were a lot of people who didn't think the, the exterior cladding was particularly attractive. And to everybody that I talked with, I kept repeating what I had learned from Ben and from the architects, which is, don't worry about that right now, that's easy to change. The main thing is that you have a design, a layout, a floor plan, that is gonna meet your needs, both in terms of size and having things that, you know, the same room can be used for two different things. And they had that in spades.
Last question from you.
Okay, last question.
Last question from Jeff. So I have probably been guilty of thinking of the capital campaign committee as a major gift, you know, a source of major gifts, as someone who, a team that arranges for that. What I've left out is the, is the value of, of something like Name a Brick, and those sort of very, very broad-based, almost everybody in the community can, can give to that, regardless of their other tax burden. Is that something that a newly-formed committee would want to guide somebody else on or take on, or is that something that you didn't even consider?
We talked about that kind of effort as well, and that's, that would absolutely be part of a fundraising campaign. It's more kind of the progression of what happens first. Usually, we, you wanna raise the major dollars first, and then you go out and raise the, but a member of our committee wanted to put a jar out, you know, today to get contributions. So that's something that would have been a part of the plan, that our consultant would have helped us map out. And a full fundraising plan is what happens when you do a campaign, so that you address all those kinds of-
Do you only want one campaign, capital campaign committee? That committee may have several different subcommittees, but the first effort is gonna be major donations, and that's gonna be what is usually termed during the quiet period.
Quiet phase, yeah.
And then you'll have a public period later on, where you might do, you know, bricks or like the auditorium, you get your name on a seat, or, there are lots of different things.
Or, or six feet that way.
Right, yeah.
Titles, yeah.
So, but you want one group organizing it, and an awful lot of volunteers.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. This has been very helpful, very eye-opening.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for yours.
Excellent information.
It's a challenge, but it's really important for our community, so.
Now, we gotta rearrange the microphones.
Do we have any other members of the library committee or ad hoc committee here that would like to come up?
Uh, yes, we have another ad hoc committee member. Come on up.
I'm gonna use the bathroom real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Joe, you gonna come up and join?
If you want.
One through four. Yeah, you got your own.
No time to see.
So now we're gonna move into a discussion with the library committee, members of the ad hoc committee, the librarian, on what we can think of about being in the next iteration of this. You know, that sort of, we've heard, you know, we need to shrink the cost, which implies shrinking the space, but at the same time, we don't wanna give up the quality of the program that we can offer. And, you know, a year and a half ago, Ben and the librarians came in with, we think this is what we can do to do all of the programs that we want. We found out that actually we didn't quite get that passed. But that doesn't stop the process. There's still a lot of good that can come of this, and we just need to find that right mix, where we've got the right size that will produce, you know, at the right cost, which will be able to still conform to the programmatic, programmatic needs that we want our library to provide to the community. And this doesn't matter which site it might be on or anything like that, it's just, what do we need to have, and how much is that gonna require for space? With that, who wants to start?
You, you prepared something.
I'd like to start.
All right.
So, good evening. My name is Ann Philly, and I'm the chair of the library committee, and that's the capacity I'm joining us tonight, joining all of you tonight. I wanted to mention also that we're a five-member, who really only has four members currently, I wanted to mention their names because they're also represented here tonight, Paul Charbonneau, Stephanie Cumbel, and Eliza Hazelton. So we're all, all members. So you will find that I'm gonna read some comments. I'm trying to break it down to do a little history. In a minute, I'll have you refer to handouts that you were given, but don't do that yet. So you wisely have requested that the library committee come tonight prepared to discuss the possibility of promoting a smaller library program space, really smaller than a two-story building presented to the community in November for building a library of 9,360 square feet. That plan was the culmination of much work by members of the ad hoc library building committee, the select board, the staff of our library, residents, comments and participation, and of course, an architect that understood the requirements, needs of libraries today and in the future. Very important. In reviewing those plans and all the work that has gone on before, there is now the requirement, the ask, that the committee reduce the library program so that a smaller building may be more palatable to the voters. We certainly understand that not everyone sees the benefit or value of a vibrant and welcoming library in our community, but we are so astounded by the many more people who are passionate about our town and our need for a new library. There are so many unknowns in this discussion, that I must state that we do need to rely on all the work regarding program space that has been completed prior to this meeting, that has gone on before us by library professionals. The library committee has been working in various capacities for really more than six years, probably longer, to focus on the future, to allow for some small growth, and to have a library that best meets the needs of all the people that use the services and our community. Because keep in mind, that it's not just the people of Rockport who use our library. I'm going to provide some comparisons of the program spaces that have gone on prior to this meeting tonight, because I believe that context is very important. It is to me, it's partly because I'm a librarian. I begin with 2015. I could go back farther, but I thought 2015, that's reasonable. And the recommendation by library consultant Steve Poggeney, who was the executive director of the Portland Public Library. Steve spent a lot of time studying our town, our library services, talking with many people, participating at different meetings, and he finally provided a program figure of 9,264 square feet. I do wanna talk a little bit about the difference between program figure and total square footage, because people kind of get caught up in that whole thing. And Steve Poggeney's proposal did not include walls, ceilings, stairs, et cetera. That was just his representation of required program space. Okay? From this report that Steve provided, the library committee at that time then provided their own recommendation. So I wanted you to look first at this page that says, "Library Program Analysis Draft." It kinda gives us an idea. So I put together what that 2015 library recommendation was. They broke it down to, you know, a common circulation desk area, all the way through public technology, et cetera, et cetera. And their functional space, without walls, I have it in little black bar, is 8,750. That was the library recommendation, library committee recommendation in 2015 to the select board. 8,750 square feet of functional space, which was accepted by the select board, and really was the basis for the information and the requirements that were given to the ad hoc library building committee. That was kind of our mantra. So, as you can see from the handout, they recommended a reduction to 8,750. So we've already dropped, okay? I just kind of wanna paint that picture, we're already dropping. Then let's review the program space square feet by the work of Reed and Company, the architect selected by the ad hoc library committee and approved by the select board. So also on that front page, we have the Reed two-story design, and I've put it into the upper-level square footage and the lower-level square footage. And I put a little black box around the total functional space, which comes down to 8,538. And if you add in all their exterior walls, et cetera, the total square feet came to 9,360. So we were lower, really, than the recommendation by the library committee in 2015. You guys still with me?
Can I interrupt and ask a quick question on that number?
Sure.
On the 8538 number?
Yes.
Because I know in the Reed design, there was some duplication of space. Is any space counted twice in that number, or is it that gross square footage?
I took it off the Reed design.
Okay, so then it probably-
So I'm hoping that-
So it isn't doubly counted then?
I'm hoping not.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And I actually have a question as well. It would be helpful to us, as you go through this, to characterize the decision-making that went in, for instance, the difference between Steve Poggeney's number and the library committee 2015 recommendation at 8,750. Was that because you knew more intimately Rockport's library's needs, or was that because you sat together and said, oh, guys, we got pressure, we gotta make it less? Is that because you discovered something that was wonderfully symbiotic in a temporal manner that could expand your space? What was the, the things that allowed you to endorse, so one would think reasonably wholeheartedly, the reduction from Steve to functional space? And then how did you feel, what did you feel you lost, if anything? Or was, were things just getting better and more nuanced and well-defined from 8,750 to 8538?
I'm gonna just kind of go backwards in my head, so give me just a second. There was a lot of discussion by members of the library committee, who felt, in some respects, that perhaps the amount of space that was indicated by Steve Poggeney's report may have been too large for us at this time, realistically. And felt that perhaps, in talking with other members of the community and people who came to library committee meetings, that it would be a good idea to take a look at those spaces, talk with the librarian, I think, I might have been the librarian at the time, I don't know if-
I was, it was Kate and I.
Okay, Kate. So it was, so maybe I'll have Ben speak to that more. But I think it was a number of things. One, where if you look at each space, and what the impact was for reducing it, it wasn't effectively taking away too much, which was important. And Ben, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, I'm, there was definitely pressure to make it smaller. From the community, from the, the library committee, there were, there were large conversations about the fact that people thought that that number that Steve gave us was just too big. So we did what we've done now, many times, this was the first time, and we sort of looked at all of the spaces, and we really said, well, what do we get out of that? And how, how does that work? Since then, I think we've all been educated to a much greater degree on what these spaces are after working with, with an architect, and seeing how things work. So, so that's where that reduction came from. The reduction then to the Reed plan was really just good design. You know, there was nothing that they cut out that, that was like, oh, no, we can't do that, that, it worked.
Yeah, there was a, there was a lot of collaboration and a lot of work that, that Ben and Dick did to make any reductions the least painful possible.
Yeah.
So that the, the program could still function with that small, that reduction in space. And, and that was due largely in part that Ben and Dick worked closely together.
Yeah.
And congratulations, by the way, on your ability to grow that quickly. I mean, your experience, not the library.
I went to school. Yeah.
But that's, that was, you know, 10 years of work in, in one year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, I wanted to mention on this first page, I did put in the Reed preliminary costs, so that you had a reminder of what the breakdown was and how we got to that $4 million figure, because really, the estimate of the new building alone was $2,595,500. So I just wanna make sure that you had that. So now I wanna move on to the library committee recommendation. And really, this came out of a couple of discussions that we had. We'd already been sort of talking about this after the vote, and then the select board discussion on maybe looking at how we could take off some space without really injuring the idea of, of a library for the community. So we worked closely with Ben, who's the library director, looking at some adjustments that we can make to the design by Reed and Company. And in doing that, we need to look how, how those spaces are used today, and identify the importance of being flexible in the future. Flexibility, you know, it's a term we hear over and over again. We saw it in Reed's design, that we could have different programs, different things going on in this space, so that spaces were used, you know, pretty much 100% of the time. And I think that's an important something we wanna continue. Some of the areas that we looked at are entry to the library. You know, that's important, how do you want the library to, to greet people coming in? It doesn't have to be huge, but entries are important. Information commons, what I mean by that is, things that are happening maybe in the community, things are happening at the library. A lot of people come- A lot of people come and look at our bulletin boards and things. The circulation area is important, because you don't want to cut too much of that, because you have this ebb and flow of people coming in, checking out books, needing information. We don't have a reference resource. All our librarians do reference. So you just want to have that space. Some of the reference information is, can be very personal in nature. You want to have space that you can move somebody off. You know, I've talked to many patrons about things having to do with their children. You know, there's just a lot that people ask of their librarians. And as Ben has mentioned before, librarians are one of the most trusted.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And we just have that study?
Yeah, we have that study. The STAY came out with that study.
Yes.
That's great.
So we need that space. Children's room, very important. Young adult spaces, because we never had a young adult space, really. We had a young adult...
Carpet.
Carpet. We did the best we could. We did the best we could.
Yeah.
Beanbag chair in there, too.
Yeah, there was a beanbag chair.
And a lovely table. I love that table. Reading and, reading and program room, very important. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Storage, we didn't really have storage in the old building. We do need storage, it's important. Conference rooms, they don't have to be big, but there is a time when we are asked and requested to use that for tutoring, for business meetings. It's important that people can come and do Skype, those kind of things. Conference rooms are important. Collection space, fiction, nonfiction, audio, music, large print, you know, all the things that we have. In addition, offering a small space, okay, this is a plug for the Friends. In addition, offering a small space for the Friends of Rockport Public Library to sort books is also of prime importance. For the last three years, the Friends have raised more than $16,000 each year through the work of the annual book sale. And their generosity over the years has provided more than $225,000 to the benefit of the library and the community. I think it's time they have a little space.
Well, and last year, not just with the book sale, but other donations that were made came to almost $20,000.
That's right.
Computers that they brought in. And now we're working on putting in carpeting in the marine room. It just goes on and on.
The Friends Rock.
The Friends.
Yeah.
Should that be on the back of these? We're friendly rocks.
Friendly rocks, I love that. I have to write that down. As a Library Committee, we are unable to answer some of the important questions, like site, since we don't know which site will ultimately make the cut. Unassignable spaces, we're not architects, we don't know what it's going to take to put the walls up, et cetera. Is it going to be one-story or two-story? Is it going to have a slab or basement? Will their ability to expand, ability to expand for future needs? What are the costs of site prep and development? Parking enhancements? What are we going to put in for furnishings and equipment? And so on, which all play into the overall costs. What we can provide is our recommendation that we reduce the functional program spaces no more than approximately 1,000 square feet. We have been working closely with the Library Director, looking at the work and recommendations that have gone on before by library professionals. So on your second page, I do have kind of a breakdown for you. And Ben has provided a lovely bunch of pictures with little blue highlights showing you what areas we have kind of been working on. The largest decrease would come from making this building a one-story building, which would reduce the required staff space, because you wouldn't need staff space on both floors. Now only requiring this on one level. Then reducing the reading, the reading room program room by 200 square feet. Libraries do need to have program rooms, but we understand that the Opera House has been and could continue to be used for larger events. We are very lucky to have that as a resource. But we do need a space in the library to provide smaller adult programs. A reading room with the flexibility to have 15 to 20 people attend a program is ideal. I can't stress how important it is to have a library continuing to be multi-generational and multifunctional, welcoming a large variety of informational, educational, and recreational programming. People learn very differently. Libraries provide an opportunity to hear things, to get interested in things, to learn about things. A reading room, which would be another part of that reading room, program room, is where people would sit and read, obviously, meet friends, use technology. If you look through some of this, you'll see that the Library Committee originally wanted 300 square feet for technology. But we have found that with the laptops that we can give out to people, we don't need as much space. People bring in their own, so really, they need more space to sit down to do their work. Programming in libraries help enlighten and educate our communities, offering ways to learn more about different places, differing opinions and discussion, as well as furthering the idea of independent learning. In this one-story scenario, there would be a reduction of space needed for stairwells, maybe the elimination of a bathroom. Sorry, that's kind of plain words. I also want to mention that a proper basement would be a way to expand in the future. See, I made you laugh. While also a place to house mechanical equipment, storage, et cetera. The reason I talk about a basement is because that would take off some of the square footage from that top level if you moved some of the mechanics down. You know, you could have a staff space, you could have the Friends down there. And it could be, provide us an opportunity to expand in the future. So I mentioned that. Reducing costs continue to be important areas to focus. I believe that we can do that without losing more space, just to provide a library that will pass. I point out that from the original recommendation of 9,264 feet of program space, we are now looking at a library that has been reduced by almost 1,730 square feet of program space. I understand very well the questions and decisions that you, as the Select Board, must make in this process. I urge you not to rush into action, that we know there will be some significant development in the future of this town, perhaps bringing in new families that would benefit by having a wonderful library, which could also increase the tax base. And we all want to think about what makes the most sense for our future. Thank you.
Before we go to questions from here, Ben, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I do want to strongly stress, I mean, we did mention, we don't know if it's going to be one-story or two. But I do want to strongly stress, the reason we have been able to make most of these cuts was by going to one-story. As you can see on the second sheet, sort of the total cuts that we made were 1,228 square feet. 958 of those square feet came out of losing elevators, duplicated staff space, and stairwells. And then reducing a little bit of the entryway. So those are things to really think about when you get into that. Yeah.
I'm sorry, if Steve Poggeney's numbers were, or certainly the second set of numbers were things without walls, why is, why are the elevators and stairwells all of a sudden included and to be taken out later?
Why, why I chose to do it this way is because I'm not an architect, and I can't, I can't think that way. I can't go, "Oh, I'm just going to do this, that, or the other". When you asked me to think about ways to reduce the size of the building, I went off of the designs that we had from Reed &amp; Company, because it's the only way I can conceptually think about how to do this, by looking at what we planned on and what worked well. And I looked at places and ways to just make the overall footprint, the overall number smaller, and that way, reducing the cost and the size of the building. Of course, being a librarian, what I was looking at was ways to do that without impacting the program. And so by making it one-story, I saw a lot of wasted space that I could then go, "I don't have to take it away from something that I feel is truly important, I can take it out of a stairwell". So that's why, I mean, this, this, these plans of reduction really hinges on it being on one-story. If you were to make this a two-story building, you would either have to make the building bigger to account for stairwells and elevators, or you would ask us to cut things that would really hurt, and really probably lower the quote-unquote "value" of the, what the community will get out of the library.
Can I, I want to follow up on this one-level, two-level thing. Anne, I think I heard you say that part of the notion of the basement is both to free up some, some equipment, you know, space, system space, but also to provide the possibility for expansion down?
I, I think so. I think what we want to look at is that, you know, we don't want to get, build a building and then immediately we're, we're done, we're out of space.
No, I thoroughly agree with that. And I'm not trying to call you out on this, I just, I think I see a potential problem with that, and I just want to ask it. If so much of this 1,000, and I'm sorry, I already forget the number.
Yeah.
A little over 1,000 square feet was achieved by going to a single level, it stands to reason that when you expand down, and you therefore now need to add those staircases and elevator, that you lose that square footage on the second level in the process of expanding down?
You do, but you also have taken out some of the mechanical space as well. So you've already, so that wouldn't have been up there. So to me, it's sort of a wash. Maybe not quite a wash, but...
Yeah, we haven't done the real numbers, but if you were to do something like that, then there are spaces that would go down there that, that are right now sort of in part of the...
That is a scenario where if you expand, you do not get the entirety of the expansion.
Correct.
Yes. I mean, and a lot of this is, this was done without working with architects.
No, I appreciate that. And I thank you guys for, for trying to, to participate in this.
Would it also, if you don't mind, would it also stand to reason that if we did do a full basement, that some of these numbers would actually end up getting added in? So we would still have to have a stairwell that leads us down?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, you would need a stairwell that led to the basement. The footprint, what would happen if you did a footprint?
You have to have one or two.
It would depend on if you were looking at future expansion into the basement, then you would need two forms of, if you were looking at any level, up or down, as far as an actual expansion space, you would need two stairwells and an elevator.
And an elevator to be added.
Yeah, you would need to put all that back in.
That becomes a question that we should ask on Wednesday, when we have the architects and engineers.
I'm just, I'm trying to grab the numbers, because sometimes we're, no fault to your own, you know, jumping around from different scenarios.
I did have stairs on here for 148 square feet, but I kept one stair.
We kept one stairwell in there. I mean, if you want, you, we can play those games with the numbers a thousand different ways. I mean, if you did that, the server room would be there. You know, there are things that would be down there, so things would be different on the program side. But again, without working with an architect, their magic can say, "Let's do this", and I go, "Oh, hey, that's a good idea".
So Ben, paint me a picture of what, for you, not playing architect, but playing day-to-day, you know, managing the library, what is the argument in your mind for single level versus two levels?
As far as management goes, it's a little easier to staff. I mean, a two-level library would be fine with the staffing we have. With one level, it's just easier. It just becomes, it comes an easier space to sort of, to use the term...
So let's, let's go, if you don't mind, I'm going to push a little bit on this. Let's, at any given time, you would have how many people, and you would, might have to add how many if you had a second floor?
I wouldn't have to add any for a second floor. That, that was, when we did the Reed design, we were very, very conscious of building a building that we would not need to add staff to. Because staff is where any substantial, long-term costs come from out of this project. So that was something we really looked at, how to staff a two-story building, really thought about. I mean, we looked at a three-story building, and I was a little hesitant on staffing a three-story building with the level, with the number of staff we have right now. It could be done, but it, it would open us up to some sort of, "Okay, how do we figure this out"? Two stories, we can do. One story is easy, as far as staffing and being on hand to be really responsive to the community if we can see like, "Oh, it looks like they can't find something". I can see them not finding it, and I can go over and talk to them. One of the things about the Rockport Public Library that is so wonderful, and that we don't have at this new space, is in the old space, it was cozy, it was tight, but we were really embedded in the books. And so that did two things that made, that I think feed into this idea that we are this cozy, friendly library. One, we could be extremely responsive to people. And two, because we were really embedded within those books, we got really good at what's called reader's advisory. So we really got to know people, and we got to be able to say, "Oh, you like this, how about this"?
So your adjacency to the books, your immediate adjacency would help the customer.
Yes, yeah. And, and that's what we don't have in the temporary space. Even in the Reed plan, we designed it that way intentionally. Dick and I would talk a lot about it. And that's why, as you see, like, the new materials are really close to the front desk, so we can really offer suggestions to people about what's new and what's not.
So architecturally, the design allows you to get closer to the intimacy, but allows you the elbow room?
Yeah. Yeah.
And by the way, if you guys have, from your experience on the, on the Ad Hoc Committee, jump right in, because, because we're, in essence, recreating what you've already been through. So if you could shorthand it for us, by all means.
I want to ask a question, because Anne referred to the use of the Opera House for a meeting room. And this goes, again, to the site. How, how does that impact things if you have a library that's right across the street from the Opera House versus one that's a half a mile away? How does that impact the program space needs in a new building?
I would say they don't. I mean, if you think, if you look, I would not change these numbers if we were at RES or at One Line Rock Street. These are the numbers. I've always been sort of program-centric. I mean, if you think about it right now, we're, what, three, four miles away, and we still come in here to do this. So that, in my mind, doesn't really change sort of the care and management of programming. We will do it the same way whether we're across the street or a mile away.
Okay.
Half a mile.
Half a mile. Yeah, however far away it is.
Sixty-eight, 100 to a mile.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the reason that the programming space, that programming room, was the one that we really looked at to take the hit, because if you look, most of this comes out of stairwells and sort of that weird space that we can cut. And the program room is the one that really we slashed a little bit. The reason we did that is because, you know, we've been listening, and we do have a duplicated space in this room we're in right now, where we can do programs that are greater than 15, 20 people. And we've worked on getting the scheduling set up so we can do that. I mean, I would ask that if we do that, and we take that philosophy of using this room as an extension of the library, that we might look at doing some renovations to make this room match whatever a new library would look like, and, and to make this room feel cozy and like an extension of a library.
It's pretty cozy right now.
Yeah, yeah. So, but that was the idea. I mean, a lot of the other spaces in the library can't be duplicated anywhere, but this space could, so that was why we chose to cut that.
Yeah, you cut the reading room by about 200 feet.
Yeah, we cut it by 200 feet. That way, we could still have tables and chairs in there, we could still have that flexibility to, to do small programs.
So what does that give you for seating capacity?
I didn't work that out. I mean, that's something that I would work out with the architects, with tables.
Somebody said 15 to 20 people.
Yeah, that's, that's a guess.
That's a guess.
I mean, that puts the room, because we're still going to have a good collection in it, because all of our spaces have a collection, because we are duplicating space everywhere that we can.
Under the Reed design, you had reference, adult biography, and large print in there as well.
Yeah, and we don't know if those collections would stay there, but whatever space that is there, that collection needs to be there.
Yeah.
In that sort of placeholder space.
Somewhere, we have to provide for reference, adult biography, and large print.
Yes, exactly. We think that it would be about similar to what we've got in the temporary space, where we'd be able to have those two tables in there, or two tables in there that people could sit around. It would be much more of a traditional reading room. But then if we move those tables out, we'd be able to put just a few chairs in for something small.
Owen, you were going to chime in?
Just trying to satisfy my curiosity. So under the Reed second-story design, you have 188 square feet allocated for stairs. And then under the Reed design first floor, you have 84 feet. When you add those two up, you get 272 square feet. I'm curious how you cut 287 square feet from 272 square feet and got a remainder of 148 square feet.
Well, I think it was a matter of trying to work within, you know, we were just taking the figures, and so it, it was... the figures, and so it, it was very rough. I'm not saying that it's exactly perfect, but I was working with Reed and then kind of trying to figure out, how much could you identify for just one stairwell?
So the, what you intended to include here was one stairwell as opposed to two?
One stairwell, right.
Yeah. Yeah, if you were to take out all the stairwells, just completely from this design, you'd save 427 square feet.
Oh, and I'm, I'm going just off of this page, and the two numbers that were here. And that's, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around all the different numbers and how they all flow. Yeah. So, okay, so look a little bit more at these two sheets than these ones.
Well, I would say these are the illustrations. What you have asked us to do is make some cuts. That's what the library program analysis draft sheet has done. So that's this little simple one.
Oh, and I see what's going on here.
And, and all of those, those notes on the square foot reductions, those then, on those two layouts, are what have done in blue. Um, so you can just see where those cuts have been made.
Okay. And I guess the, the other stair numbers just weren't included on this debt sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes me feel bad.
I mean, and it's one of those unknowns, like, if you, if you make it be a two-story, we've got to work stairs in and an elevator, you know? So the stairs were one of those, well, how do we handle these exactly, you know? Anne wanted to, you know, if we put a basement in, Anne was like, well, we need to keep a stairwell. It's like, yep, that's right. So it's, it's a wonky thing to do.
It's a ball of yarn, pulling here, you don't know where it's going to go.
Eric and Joe, what do you, what's your take on this that you've heard so far?
I think the major difference between this conversation and the conversation we're having for months in the ad hoc committee meetings have been the potential of going to a one-story design. Um, we simply did not have that ability to get even close to the programmatic space, whether that was Pajani's number, or, you know, Ben's sharpen the pencil number one, or Ben sharpened the pencil number two, three, or four. So, um, I think that's the major difference in the tenor of, and sort of detail of this conversation.
If I could just address two points, and I'd like to, I, I don't question the program space that Ben and Anne have defined. I'm not the expert on that. I rely on the experts to do that. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the process that we did use in some of the parts that maybe were successful, some not so successful. When we went in, we had some constraints on the problem that we were trying to address. We had program space, we had where it was going to be built, um, we had approximate ideas of maybe what would be reasonable cost. And so we had to make trade-offs with that, and we, we really, I don't think we ended up coming up with a design that met any one of the constraints we were given fully. And so, um, in, in making that, it's not really possible, I don't think, to come up with the right design or the best design, because that's different in everybody's mind. And we found that out very quickly. We need all to be reasonable people and look at this, and maybe make trade-offs as what is an acceptable design, and maybe not in our own minds what's the best design. Um, so, we could look at making the library smaller. I would be perfectly fine with that. I think we could find ways that we could do that and still make it usable. Um, we had some people that came from the public and visited with us that wanted a smaller library, some that wanted a larger library. So we tried ourselves to make those trade-offs, and I think we at least did a reasonable job, not trying to be defensive, but I think we did a reasonable job in, in trying to reach some of the, that middle ground there, to find it. So I think the real challenge here going forward, you're going to come up with a design recommendation also, and it's not going to be the right design. It's going to be another design, it may be a little bit smaller, and that may be fine. Somehow, we need to work with the community and help everyone understand how that would be an acceptable design for everyone. May not meet everybody's goals, everybody's desires, but we all need to be reasonable when we look at it. One other point I'd like to make, and that is that, I guess, something that was enlightening for me as I went through this process, and that was that I heard a number of comments through the eight or nine months that we did this, um, and I think some individuals, a fair number of individuals, may be stuck in the past as to what a library is. And I think that I heard a lot of comments that we don't need a building to house these paper books. And I don't envision that a library is a place that you go to check out a paper book anymore. I'm not sure I've checked out a book in a long time. I think it's a center that you absorb and exchange knowledge with other individuals through different forms of media, through video media, through internet, through books, through ebooks, through anything. And so I think that the way that we look at a library in this community is important also, in that it's not just a place that you go to get a paper book anymore. Um, and I think for that reason, many people didn't see utility in proliferating the need for a library. So, those two words of wisdom.
Somewhere back along the line, somebody said, "A library is not just books anymore," or something, you know, words to that effect.
We, we did, yeah. I think the committee certainly said that, and we recognize that, yes.
Well, and to your point, I mean, what we're doing and going through these numbers tonight and talking about making reductions is not possible at all if you didn't do the work that you did, your committee.
Oh, sure.
So, that's, we need to make sure that you guys understand that.
There's a tremendous, you know, as we've gone down through the layers of this, starting way back with the steering committee, I mean, there's been a lot of work that has gone into this over the past three years. And I think the numbers that you're looking at have been refined and re-refined and re-refined, so you're buil, you're building on the benefit of the work that's been done previously. It's not like we're starting over at square one. The numbers are really, have been gone through and gone through and gone through a number of different times. Um, so you're, you're down to the, you know, getting to the final ideal target, I, I think. Um, you know, I think the recommendations, you know, the, the recommendations that Ben just gave us are, it gets you closer to a target that, that can, can work. I, I think that, I think we're getting there.
Do we have any so-called questions from home?
Well, we have a lot of questions from the last eight weeks.
Yeah, none, none, no questions that are-
The cars that you got around?
Oh, no, they're, they're really-
Oh, that's tomorrow night?
As, as they say in the South, bless your soul. Um, a lot of the questions coming out of this room are actually more appropriate for other meetings.
Okay.
Um, and we'll get to yours on, on the fourth meeting. But as, as a, I put together the matrix of what people have said in the meantime, and I would like to pepper you with questions after, after I say, yes, Ben, you have something to say.
Yeah, no, no, and pepper away, I just wanted to say that I've brought the last six months of stats with me for the library.
We'll, we'll get to that.
Oh, okay, okay. You want to get to that later, then we'll do that.
And this is in no particular order, but is this a good time to do this?
I think it'd be a good time to interject some of them.
Okay. Um, so, a number of people, including one person that was here today, commented on their concept of how big a library should be for a town Rockport size, and can you speak to whether this library is, is too big for Rockport, or if, if it's not too big for Rockport, explain why, why it might feel that it is?
Well, I'm not going to really talk about why it might feel like it's too big, because I feel like that's, you're asking me to shoot myself in the foot a little bit there. I can talk about why it's the right size for what we do. And again, that probably feeds into the statistics on, on what we do. Um, so, when we designed the Reed plan, um, we did not over-design that plan. We didn't work in a bunch of extra stuff. We got to a point where things worked and we stopped. And that's why this phase is actually a little easier, because for any cut you want, I can tell you what you're not going to get anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, you know, it is, it is ultimately your decision as representatives of the community to decide what is appropriate for Rockport. As a library professional, getting the opportunity to build something great for the future, I think, is something that you shouldn't shy away from when it comes to a library. I mean, this is a civil institution like nothing else in any town, ever. And I think in any community, it really shows how much you care by how nice your library is, if that makes a certain amount of sense, by how much you're willing to invest in something that's basically benevolent. Um, so, I mean, just in the last six months, so this is from July 16 to December 16, we have already done, we've already circulated 27,000 books, ebooks, audiobooks, DVDs, paper books. Um, that's in just six months. So, and our circulation has actually been up the last three months, which is surprising. I don't know where it's coming from, but I'm really happy about it.
As, as compared to last year at this time?
Compared to last year at this time, yeah. We knew we'd be up in December, just because we were closed for 10 days last December for the move. Um, so we're up across the board in December, but in November and October, we still saw small incremental upticks in circulation, visits, things that I would not have expected in winter in Maine, thrown out on Route 1. Um, so, I mean, for our attendance, so this is just for, for circuit, visits, people coming in to hang out, to check out these 27,000 books, or to just use the internet, we saw, we've already seen 21,000 people.
21,000 clicks on your-
Clicks on the door counter. So, yeah, that does count me coming in the building, but, you know, this is the way all libraries take their statistics. We are doing this on a professional standard. This is how it's done. Um, and that's, that's where we're at.
So to reiterate, your, your body count is exactly the same methodology as any other library?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um-
Do you think the mildness of this winter maybe helped?
Maybe.
I could totally see that. It's just easier to get out when there's not three feet.
It could be, but last winter was really mild, too.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, um, we have already done 277 programs. And now that's between our outreach and our in-building programs. So when Ben Odegrin, our children's librarian, goes out, you know, we count that as a program. He's reaching kids at Penn Bay or Little Learners. Um, that's a library program. We would love to do those in the building, but it's just not feasible for them to bring the kids there. Um, and with all of those programs, the attendance at those has already been 3,316. So, when you're thinking about Rockport and the library and why it needs to be so big, is, we're busy. We're simply busy. Um, in comparison to other libraries in our, our population size, our town population size, we're typically the second, third, fourth out of about 60 libraries in what we do.
In our size category.
In our size category, which tops out at 4,999. Um, so-
Which Camden within us, within Camden.
Yeah. Typically, you know, on some of the smaller categories, it's, it's, we get beat by all sorts of random libraries who do things really well. When you look at a lot of the other ones, we will be beat by Kennebunk or Camden, both of which are tourist destinations for one reason or another. So, you know, they have specific things that are drawing people to the community, and they have libraries that are front and center in those communities. Um-
A couple of clarifications. When you say, "so far this year," you mean since July 1?
I, since July 1, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, since July 1.
And when you say programs, you're also including like the mahjong group, the French-speaking group, the genealogy group.
Exactly, yeah. All of those, um, reoccurring programs, which bring people in, and the one-offs that we do, the bigger ones, when we show a movie, or we have a speaker come in, or the Camden Conference gives us somebody, all, all of those, yeah, yeah. So we go through, we're, we're very busy and we're very vibrant. Um, I mean, pat yourself on the back, Rockport, you know, you, you do this right. Um, and when you think about libraries, they've seen a vast level of change in the last 20 years. Um, I don't expect that to stop. I mean, we're going to keep changing. I would say, all of the research I've read is ebook adoption sort of has plateaued or started on a downward trend. Um, people who want to use those, use those now. Books aren't going to go away, especially in, in a rural community. Um, they're just, they're just not. I mean, there may be a time where we don't want to have such a huge collection for some reason, but I don't know what that reason would be yet. Um, you know, at a large academic library that has access to some of those really big databases, sure, but we just don't have some of those, those things. Um, so, when you're thinking about how big the library is to, if you ever want to just come and see how we've already outgrown the space we're in, come on over and I can show you. I mean, the children's room, the shelves are six feet tall. You know, in the regular collection, the shelves start at six feet tall, and some are even taller. And, and when you're looking at a building that needs to be accessible for an older population and a younger population, um, it's really, i- it's unacceptable to some degree. I mean, it's, it's literally putting the books out of reach for people. Um, anybody with mobility problems is not going to be able to reach up or sit, get on a stool and get anything off the top shelf. And most people don't want to get anything off the bottom shelf either.
And is it fair to say that these are, are new standards, if you will, new, new consciousness, or this has been all the way along, so?
No. This is, this is just the way it is. I mean, when we moved into the new space, that was the first time we had become ADA compliant in 70 years. We were never ADA compliant in the old building. So, yeah.
Too narrow.
The shelves were too narrow, and the end was too small to sort of turn a wheelchair around at the end of. So, I mean, in some ways, moving there has forced us to really look at, at sizes, because that was utterly too small, but we were grandfathered in so that we could legally break the rules about some of these size standards. Um, so when we moved into a building that's about 5,000 square feet, we overfilled it on day one.
So I'm going to do a follow-up and not do a couple more things from the public, and then relinquish for a second. Um, is, and Rick jumped in on this too, if, for those people, I don't know if you even dare to bring this up, but I, but I do want to give credence to everybody who said things. For those people who feel as though we could renovate the existing library with mold mitigation, et cetera, et cetera, once we pour a certain amount of money into there, that then has to become totally ADA compliant?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would up the, up the price that significantly?
Yeah.
Okay, just-
And reduce the space.
And reduce the space, obviously, yeah. Um, one, and, and I don't know if I should attribute names to these, but these are, are distilled from lots of letters and lots of-
Yeah, you don't need, it's fine.
"Teenage space is inadequate, not private enough," is one person's perspective.
In the-
In, presumably in what we have now. Presumably, it's a caveat. Let, let me put this as a question. Specifically speaking, in your single-story distillation of, of space allocation, do the teens get enough space?
In the design we did with Reed, I believe so. Um, I believe we had enough space for the teens. The teens are one of the hardest populations to reach, doesn't mean we shouldn't try our hardest all the time to get them in there, but they're, you know, they've got a, a library in their school, and, but it's not open much. Um, they're just really overscheduled, and, and they don't have time to come in and, and use our library. Now, we're in one of those positions where we've never really had an adequate teen space, so I have no idea what would happen if we did. I mean, I really, I really have no idea if, what would happen if we did. Um, in the one-story design, I mean, in, in the design we did with Reed, we put that space, um, basically in a glassed-in box right outside of, I mean, yeah, right outside of a place where we would have a staff member. So, they would have some acoustic separation and some acoustic privacy, but we would be able to monitor them. So, as far as, you know, you want to give teens especially the feeling that they are adult and that they don't need to be looked at and monitored all the time, that they're going to act right. But we all know, we need to, we need to monitor them a little bit, to some degree. Um, so that's why we chose to do all that. I have no idea how it would work in a one-story. I mean, until, until we work with an architect, I don't know where we'd put it, how it would work, what would be in that room, um, what wouldn't. We sort of went back and forth with Reed quite a bit. He and I spoke a lot about the teen space and the teen collection, because we want to give the teen, the teens space, but we also want to have that space be accessible to everybody else, because as you know, a lot of people read young adult literature of all ages. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to have that space feel like it was getting invaded all the time, um, you know, by us going in and being like, ah, I want to get this book. So, a lot of that collection was actually outside of that room.
Right.
Um, but the room was still there, and there were, we were going to keep all the nonfiction, and, um, we're going to keep the nonfiction- But the room was still there, and there were, we were going to keep all the nonfiction, and we're gonna keep the nonfiction, the audiobooks, the computers, and sort of a space for them to be in that space, but the actual fiction collection was gonna be a little outside that.
Jeff, as a layperson, we had lots of conversations about this within the committee, and the thing that I took away was it's less about square footage than it is about location and some of the attributes that Ben just referenced.
I think we got past that early on, yeah.
So, in terms of a numbers game, square footage equals dollar signs, when it comes to teens, it's, it's really letting the pros do the work that they need to do.
Right, which is something I certainly believe in, because I'm not an architect. And again, this is, you know, things distilled from, there's three different people at three different times said something to the, to the extent of, why don't, why doesn't Rockport have a library that is consciously coordinated between Camden and Rockland? And the idea being smaller libraries?
Yeah, so, I can talk a little bit about that. We, not so much why, how to make it a smaller library while working with other libraries, but we work with libraries across the state every day, if you really want to get into the nuts and bolts of what we do. We get deliveries through interlibrary loan five days a week, which again is generously supported by community members in the town. That's the only way we could afford to do it that many days a week. So far this year, let me see, so we've had, we have sent out three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven books to other libraries in the state, and we've received three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-one. So, every day we're doing that, and that's Camden, Belfast, Rockland, everybody is doing that, that's in the Minerva system. There's a lot of interplay that way. We don't do a lot of programming with each other, just because that, you know, each community is individual and separate, and you want to be able to respond to your local community. So, you know, Camden does different things than Rockland than we do, than, you know, Lincolnville does, just based on, on local interest and how best, you know, we can serve the community based on partnerships that we've got with other nonprofits, with the town, in, in ways like that. We do reach out with libraries around us and do different things, though. Keith, our programming librarian, is going to be teaching a course at URock coming up with one of the librarians from Rockland about digital literacy, you know, citations, how to use databases, of that nature. Once a month, the Rockland, Camden, and Rockport librarians get together, and they have a radio show where they just talk about all their events that are coming up. But I don't really know how you would be able to merge any of the libraries around, just solely based on funding, when it gets right down to it. I don't know how you would merge endowments. I don't know how you'd merge any of those things to sort of have satellite libraries in these little communities. I, I, I really, I don't know how to do it. I mean, we work together, and we support each other, but each town has chosen to have a library, and I don't know how you would sort of unchoose to have one since you've started it. Yeah.
And I think you have to keep in mind that those communities are very proud of their libraries, and they don't, they really want to have that separateness. And it's kind of funny, because, you know, I've talked to several moms who, you know, take their kids to toddler story time, and they time it. Okay, I can go to Thomaston, I can go to Rockland, I can go to Camden, and I know what days are available to me in Rockport. So, you know, that kind of works together, and for, for people who are really budget-conscious and want to be able to, you know, have something to do with their children, it is the best of all the worlds, really.
Even with the programming that you do on your programming nights, when we, when we were looking for a way to try to schedule programming so they could use this building more, it meant some moving around of some things, because the, the three libraries, Camden, Rockland, and Rockport, their, their programming nights are on different nights, so residents are free to go to any one of them.
Yeah, and we're really lucky in the mid-coast, to be honest, to have so many great libraries, to be honest. I mean, people come to different libraries for different reasons, and we often have people from other communities coming here because they like our library for one reason or another. And so, that's one of those things to think about, too, when you, when you think about the number of people that are coming to our library and, and the greater community that we serve in the mid-coast region. You know, you want to think about that. We've got about two-thirds of our cardholders, active cardholders, are from Rockport, and about one-third are from surrounding communities. And so, they have to choose to come and use us, and they do that because they, they like something about the service, or the collection, or the programming, you know?
Or the people.
Or the people, you know? They, they choose to do that, though, on their own. And so, those are, those are just really interesting things to think about when you're thinking about size and space and scope. And really, the question that I feel like you're asking with, well, the question that I feel like the public is asking with these is a question that we deal with all the time, and it's really how do we communicate the value of a library to all of its citizens? And I would love it if everybody in Rockport had a card. I would love it if every citizen, like, when they came to the town and they registered their card, they just automatically got a library card whether they wanted it or not, and they could use it or not. I, I think, I think that would be a great, let's talk about that, let's do that. It's just a little more paperwork, and we'll do it all. But, but it's, it's one of those things where, where the value of libraries is often overlooked, but you can never really understate it.
And, and as a side note to the board, I'm sure the board will impress upon the Capital Campaign Committee not to look only in Rockport for funding.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thirty-three percent.
Okay.
I'm done for all.
I wanted to ask, from a programming point of view and as a library professional, when, with this, with this new one-story plan that you've thrown out here as a, as a rough proposal, what would you consider the time, the need for expansion would be, and when would that need come along?
So, that was one of those things we didn't throw out. So, and what I say, when I say that, what I mean is, when you look at these two designs, the shelves are, these are real shelves, they are spaced greater than ADA compliance apart. So, if in the future we needed more space within the building, you could make those shelves just go to the ADA compliant regulations, and there would be room for a full shelf in the nonfiction, the fiction, and I believe in the children's room as well. So, what we did by doing that is you can almost do an expansion within the building. If, you know, in fifteen years, people don't want books anymore, I don't see that happening, but then you would have floor space to convert into, into something different. So, when we were looking at making these cuts, Ann and I, we had a lot of conversations about how not to take away the future-proofing of the building, and how to keep it, keep it safe in that way, so that we're not going to get into a position where we have moved into a new building, and it's already too small for this, that, or the other reason. You know, we would, we would, I, I would love for us to move into this building, though, and just be too small because too many people are coming all the time. That would be a win, you know? That would be a win. It would be unfortunate. We'd have to figure out a way to fix that, but that would be, that would mean we've done it right. So, we didn't take out things that were like, that, that would curtail that sort of future-proofing and the flexibility out of the building. So, my hope would be that we wouldn't need to do an expansion for a long time, but really, that all depends on demographics of the town.
I, I was just gonna say, I think that much of what we looked at in the committee was expanding the library due to increasing population.
Yeah.
But there may be other reasons. There may be, like Ben said, such a compelling need of other, other programs or other things we decide to do there that causes an increase in the library size.
Yeah, but I wouldn't think to do any of those without facts and data to back that up. I wouldn't even ask to do that unless I saw a real need.
Yep.
Can I hear a little more about the flex programming space that you do here?
You mean the programs we do in this room specifically? Yeah, so, we will use this for pretty much anything that we can't do in the building. We all, and when I say we all, the whole staff of the library, and I think pretty much any library professional that you talk to would prefer to do a program in the building, in a library, yeah. There's a lot of reasons for that, but mostly it boils down to, what, what can I offer you here in this room if I did a library program other than that program? Can't, nothing. If I did that program in a library, maybe you go and check out a book that you just heard something about. Maybe you've met with somebody, and now that was at that program, and you can go and have a conversation and sit down somewhere, which you couldn't do here. You know, you could check your email really quick. You could, there, there are so many peripheral benefits from actually doing the programming in the library that, that everyone would prefer to always do it there if you, if we can. We understand we're in a unique position. We need to cut things, and there was a space that we could duplicate. So, what we generally do here is we do some children's programming in the summer, or whenever Ben comes up with something really that we can't do in the library for space reasons. But we do the, a lot of the summer reading programs we do here, just because we expect numbers greater than we can hold in the library. Huh? Yeah, well, yeah, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. There's a lot. We do, the Friends sponsor the annual Seafaring Series, which is a program that is for Thursdays a month, for a month, that we do here. We have to do it here because we'll pack the room. I mean, this year, we did three down here and one upstairs, and we packed the place every time. It was great numbers for the Seafaring Series this year. The Friends really knocked it out of the park that way. We do most of our Camden Conferences events here, so anytime we get like a speaker that wants to come in and, and do that type of thing, we would do it here. So, pretty much for any program you can think of that can't be accommodated in the library, we would do here. Now, as part of the Rockport Public Library's sort of game plan with programming that, that is wonderful, and I've inherited it, is we have a lot of ongoing sort of small programs, like the French group, Mahjong, fiber arts, poetry, those type of events that are ongoing events that just are community-centered and community-driven that happen in the library. So, those we wouldn't do here. We would never shift those here. They normally happen bi-weekly or weekly. But right now, we're in sort of a weird situation, too, with our programming, because there are things that that building doesn't let us do, and there are things that this room doesn't really let us do well. So, you know, like, I couldn't really show a movie here. Maybe I could, I don't know. We'd have to talk. We'd have to figure out how to do it, but again.
Let's talk.
Then I'm just showing a movie here, and there's nothing sort of around it at the library. So, so those are sort of the philosophical reasons why we want to do the programs in the library, and we sort of do all our overflow or things that we expect would be bigger here. When we were in the old space, if we expected to have more than fifteen or twenty people, we'd really think about doing the event here.
So, Ben, I had a quick question. You said, you said if you were to use this more often and more full-time, you would want to do a makeover on it?
I would, I would.
Tell me what that means.
Ideally, I would just want to sort of do some cosmetic things to hide it. I really like a lot of the tech that's already built in. Ideally, to use this room well for a library, I would want to be able to hide the, the dais that you're sitting at, you know, box that in, hide it, movable walls, whatever. Same with all the chairs that get stacked up in the back. I would want the colors to match the colors of the library. I'd want some bulletin boards. No, really, I mean, and, and I, and they sound like funny things, but, but it's, it's really important that if this is going to be part of the library and an extension of the library, that it matches and it feels good.
I, I think that's one of the trade-offs we need to make.
Yeah, and as a town, yeah.
Where, if we're expecting the library to use this space as an extension of the library, then we, I, I, I think we need to make, be willing to make a trade-off of how we use the room as well.
We could just make the new library look like this room.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Owen.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd want a projector in the ceiling and, and, you know, sort of rig it for sound to show movies, to show events, you know? A podium. No, this is, we're really close on that level.
My question was really more that confirming that you use this space for things where it's just unreasonable to expect the community library is ever gonna be able to accommodate that, as opposed to.
Oh, that's not true at all. That's the thing. If, if you chose to put the space in for a programming room, we wouldn't use this. We would use the library.
So, this is what I want to get to the bottom of. If you described to me a, a Seafaring Series where you're substantially full upstairs, to me, I, I can say pretty confidently, guys, we're not gonna make that happen in the library.
No, 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 no.
Whereas, some of the things that I think you're talking about might cross more into actually, this is, we're, we're in this space because our library is inadequate.
Yes.
Can, can you appreciate what I'm, what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, and, and.
And it's, it does strike me as peculiar to spend millions of dollars on anything that you know to be inadequate, but on the other hand, I fully understand that, like, if some of the uses is the Seafaring Series and you're full upstairs, we're never gonna make that happen.
And, and so.
At one point, and this is before the last iteration with the Ad hoc Library Planning Committee, we were looking at rooms that could hold like forty to fifty people. Well, it got cut to thirty people.
Look, I don't know where the lines are, but I think we're hovering around the same question here.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you're absolutely right. This will, this Opera House will always be a resource to the library, hands down. I mean, I can get people who, who are, say, you know, we want to, basically musicians that would say, we'd really like to play the Opera House. I can cut you a break on how much it would cost if, if we can play the room. You know, there, there are situations like that, that we will always want to use the upstairs of this place, or even this room, if we think we're gonna get more than, than fifty people, or thirty people, or twenty people. It's a tiered system. You're absolutely right, and, and we're unique in the way that we actually have this. If we didn't have the Opera House, I don't think we would even be discussing cutting a programming room. I think everybody would say, that's absolutely vital, and we need that. But because we're in this position where we have another space to do it, that's why I think the conversation has been around it. I mean, every new library I've been in has a room that can do these events to about sixty people. I mean, I don't know how many Camden can hold. Camden's room feels a little small.
Seventy-five.
They can hold seventy-five?
It's very tight.
Real tight, yeah.
You pass out oxygen.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna be like, Rockland's a big one, and, and, you know, we went and saw one in Cape Elizabeth. They've got a great, nice, beautiful room. So, yeah.
Well, I think the flip side of that, to Brendan's argument of, you know, why would we build a library that's inadequate for the space? But the flip side of that is because we have this building, that allows us to enhance our library, and to say, well, we can build a library of a certain size, but because we have this building, it allows us to do things that a library of that size couldn't do.
Yeah, that's really what I was getting at, is this is a space that you're always gonna make, you're always gonna nail yourselves of, not that it makes.
Yeah, yeah. We'll always use this to some degree because it's a unique space, and it can hold a lot more people.
Owen?
Steve, did I get it right?
No.
No.
Joe.
Joe! Damn it, I even asked someone else, too. I apologize for that, Joe. I thought I had it. So, I wanted to pick up on something that Joe said. I, I too heard a lot from folks that maybe the direction that the new library that was proposed was going in was a little bit of the older version of libraries and not setting themselves up great for the future. I personally struggled with that, because I don't, I don't read on tablets. It's confusing for me. I do a lot of stuff on a computer, yes, but when I want to read a book, I want to read a book, smell that book, feel that book. But at the same time, I, I heard a lot of that, too, from a lot of different folks. It was a big range of folks that I was hearing similar things to. With that in mind, would that, if we subbed in some, some stairwells and things of that nature, that starts to bump up our overall square footage, would that future-looking library, would that make it easier for you to cut some of the, not catalog, but what do you call your?
Collection.
Collection.
Collection space, or would it be easier to shift some of the actual book square foot allocation to something else, or make the numbers make more sense, while still having a full basement, which I agree is great for expansion purposes, but we would, then, then we're having to put elevators and stairs in? Which I agree is great for expansion purposes, but we would, then, then we're having to put elevators and stairs in. Does a future library, if, if you're legit putting yourself in the future, does it look the same that, that you had designed with Reed and Company?
Well, I'm going to answer that maybe in a couple of different ways because I feel like there were a couple of questions in there. One statement that I will firmly make and I will make this with any design that I ever work on building a library. I do not want to balance the square footage on the back of the collection. I don't think that's a reasonable thing to do. Um, we've invested in the collection that we have. And to, to say, let's just get rid of like a quarter of that so we don't have much room. I think would be, i- i- it's problematic in the least, I mean, to, to say the least. Um, so, so I don't want to sort of get into any conversations really about. Balancing the square footage of the library based on a reduction in the collection. I would much rather prefer letting sort of trends in the library profession, the greater world. And the local community dictate how large or small that collection grows. Um, because that's the way that you stay responsive in a library and in your local community. Um, so, you know, that being said, I have no idea what's going to happen fifteen years from now. And worst case scenario, everybody goes to ebooks and we don't need the shelf space for this. We'll need it for something else. You know, there's, there's no future that I can see where a library as sort of a benevolent institution. That levels the playing field informationally for everybody, um, doesn't matter. You know, so you take out all the shelves because everybody's gone to computers, then you gotta have computers. You know, and those take up, I would say even more room than a bunch of books on a shelf. So, um. That's sort of the, the overarching big thing that I would think about when, when looking at collection and square footage. Um, I have no idea what would happen working with Reed again, though redesigning it. Because a lot of these, they opened my eyes to thousands of different little nuanced things about how to make things work closer together. How to make things just work as far as a library design goes. So there may be ways to reduce the space without reducing the space, if that makes sense. You know, ways with through adjacencies, um, to make the building a little smaller, but without losing anything. So I don't know if that really answers your question or not.
To the best that you could.
Okay.
You're doing good.
We're going to get close here to wrapping up, but I think we've got another question coming in. Brendan, you have something first?
This is, uh, it's a bit of a non sequitur from where we, from where we just were. But from the perspective of the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee. Um. So, so the board has described working toward that which will pass and that which will get an awful lot of support. And we heard about the importance of whatever it is that we come up with. Adequately communicating that and engaging with the public to explain what it is that is being proposed. And that they're going to have an opportunity to vote on. I think there was an implication that I will say we, because I was there at the end. Didn't do a good enough job or didn't have enough time to do a good enough job or some combination of those things the last time around. Can, can, can you guys speak to that? Um, if there. Are there obvious things that we could do considerably better? Um, once we have a new proposal in that engaging with the public at the end before the vote?
Well, I think that it's important to figure out the best ways to deliver the messages that you want the town to hear. Um, we, a lot of us assume that people read online or read the newspapers. And, uh, you know, we found that that's really not so. Because people are oftentimes taken aback, you know, I knocked on doors. Um, and much of that information came across as maybe partially correct. Or they had additional questions, but if you, like if you're doing a Q and A, you know, maybe I somehow get it out to everybody. These were the questions, these are the answers. You know, we tried to post them around, but I still don't think people really, um, looked at them. And, you know, from the staring committee's standpoint, we didn't really realize that we were going to be sort of in charge of communication. So we were up, up high and we ended and then, oh my God, we have to do something about communication. And I think we kind of just lost our mojo. And we didn't really know what we were supposed to do at this point. You know, we wanted to help in some way. And I have to, you know, give Jan a lot of credit, Jan Rosenbaum, for getting us to that point. And so what I'm trying to say is that you have to come out with a true communication program. You know, from start to end. This is how we're going to make it happen. This is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to reach, you know, our three thousand constituents. So I think that's an important piece.
I, I wish we would have had more engagement as we went through the process and not just the last month or two months, but all the way through. And so we had a number of meetings, we had FAQs that we'd send out. But I don't feel like many individuals really got very involved. It was usually the same group of individuals that would come every time. And so it was great that I know that the live stream for the library ad hoc committee was probably the most popular TV show on. But the, the disadvantage there was we, we didn't have that interaction to talk about things and talk about the importance of those priorities. In people's minds. So if I could have found a way, and I don't have the answer of how that is. But I could, if I could have found a way to engage more with people, to sit down and to understand concerns, i- it would have been very helpful. Because we did try to incorporate what we did here, but I don't think we heard enough.
Right.
And if it makes you feel any better, since I've been on this board, we've been talking about how we engage with the community better. It's, it's something that's been very difficult.
So one thing that I would pose to you guys is. What would you do with another issue that perhaps had a, a, a feeling of higher community import? Or input? Um, what, what would you as a select board recommend? How would you resource it to get, um, more than just the two percent who are on one side of the issue and two percent on the other side? Who are going to get fired up just because that's who they are. They're active, engaged, you know, passionate people with, with thoughts. Um, uh, what would you do? What have you done in the past?
I wish, I can't answer that question because we haven't found a winning strategy yet.
Well, I, actually, I think we have, I mean, because we had.
Make people really upset till they finally pay attention.
I think we're getting there.
That was just a half.
I mean, let's talk about, talk about the infrastructure bonds that we had. I mean, that was a lot of money, uh, that we asked. And we, we put together a, a package of infrastructure projects around the town. And we had some meetings on it, we had public hearings on it, we, we put together a, I don't know whether it was an FAQ or a letter to the editor. Or something of that nature and had it in the papers and said, this is what we want to do and it's, it's all over town. And we made all the points as to why we thought that this was a good idea, this was our proposal. And it passed by a huge margin, much more than I expected it to pass. So that worked for whatever reason. Now, maybe the logic of it clicked with people, I don't know.
Um, and I would offer that if you get the same enthusiasm around the library issue. That is going to require some level of private funding philanthropied, pop in the door. The resources that you might need to put towards getting people fired up to just be aware of the library issue and to come out and vote. Hopefully in a positive, uh, fashion to the recommendation put forth by yourselves is going to pay off in spades. When it comes to knocking on doors and raising twenty bucks from each person.
Right.
The, the other thing that, that this board may be too young to recall as a board in official capacity. Is that we were very successful with the YMCA vote, which was a huge meeting, several smaller, you know, fifty, seventy, five hundred group meetings. And then we packed the opera house upstairs for a very informative, substantial dialogue where people lined up twenty-five deep, waiting for the microphone. To talk about that and, and it was a good, honest deliberation, which had, let's say eighty-five percent of the emotional value. That the library has. You know, people say, oh my God, it's too big, oh my God, this, that and the other thing. All of that was worked out and now I haven't heard anybody complain about any of the things that people were worried about. That either weren't as much in reality to worry about or that got fixed because of the dialogue. So we have that model that, that really worked well and, and I, you know, would very much urge our, this board to, to utilize that. Minimum once, twice, uh, during this process.
And, and I mean, to, to be fair, we have tried these things with this issue before. It's a more contentious issue. The community is more divided on it. There's, there's no two ways about that. Um, but we have to, we just have to keep working harder and, and earlier in the process. And part of the problem is, as we heard earlier with the Capitol Campaign Committee here, that when doors were knocked on and, and, and knocked on doors too. People weren't necessarily informed and that may be because they weren't paying attention. And, and a lot of people don't pay attention to things in town government and that's just the way society is now. But I think in this case, because the community is divided, we are literally going to have to force feed this to the community. And I don't mean that in a negative way, but to get the information out there, to really make sure that everybody understands it.
You may be inviting a little bit of people a- a- actually tuning it out.
Yeah, of course.
And they're, they're saying, oh, the library.
I'm tired of it, yeah. There, there is that, that aspect of it too.
And there's also complexity of the issue itself. I mean, you could talk about programming space, exterior envelope, overall costs, square footage. Sites, I mean, it, it becomes, and as you all know, having gone out and, and tried to get support for that initiative. It does take a decent amount of time to walk through all the various aspects. And by the end of it, typically you do get someone who's relatively supportive of it. But there's a good five to ten minute back and forth to have people fully grasp even the, the skeletal structure. Of what we're doing. But, but maybe an infrastructure is just easier. Oh, you want to fix a bridge? I don't care what the bridge looks like as long as I can drive over it. So sure, you sold me on that. Yeah, guessing.
Yeah, um, I would say, you know, when I was sort of pushing this, what I was doing was just being scheduled. Basically to go out to a lot of house parties where I would go in and I would sit down with people and they'd have coffee. And we would just sit down and, and basically do a Q and A in people's house with just their neighbors. Um, and there is, there's a lot to get through when you really, when people want to drill down into this issue. They all have, they all had different questions. I mean, most of those lasted an hour or more. Um, and, and you know, I think that's what it's going to take, neighbors talking to neighbors, people talking to people. But what I would urge you to do, and this is just because in my own life, this works. You've got to be enthusiastic about whatever we plan. Now, it's not on, I mean, it's always on me and I'm always going to be enthusiastic. I'm always going to be excited about it. Because it's an exciting thing, any library is. But it's going to be on you to do that now. Because the way the structure is, and I mean, it's not going to just take you saying, this is a really good idea, this is a really good plan for Rockport, these are the reasons. You're gonna have to be excited about something in the library. And if we can't design something that has something that you're all excited about. I mean, Charlton was talking about me being sort of a litmus test for that and I think I'm easier to please because I love libraries. Um, you know, they're kind of my thing. But, but if you all found something in there that you were excited about and could talk about. And be really singing to the rooftops about, that's going to go a long way.
Um. Then you shouldn't have taken away the second store balcony patio.
That's wrong.
I know.
Okay, we're not going back there.
Just saying.
Owen, let's, let's move forward here.
I, you know what? It was, it would have been cool. We would have done all kinds of neat things with it, but that's, I think.
Programming.
Yeah, I think it's going to really, I mean, don't underestimate the part of actually getting into this and doing it and having a good time.
I have a question. Um, referencing the folks that put together this, the general process that we're going to be going through. Um, I was kind of under the assumption that we were attempting to do a compare and contrast between the two sites. However, at this point, I don't know if, yeah, but I wanted to, getting input from all the different folks about the two sites. I think is important. I've been trying to rack my brain how it's appropriate for me to ask this specific group of folks about the two sites. So I would look to.
Do, do you guys have any preference on sites?
Well, I mean, that.
As, as, as people who work with it all the time, that's.
I mean, I asked the question about the use of the opera house and would the site.
Right.
You know, impact that and, and Ben said, answered that and said, no.
No.
So that's, that's how I, because I think you're right, you want to ask that, but you need to ask it in context as to the things that we're talking about.
That's what I'm trying, I've been trying to get a. And good way to work that in, but I'm.
I mean, for me, and again, I've, I've done this for a few reasons, but I have been extremely program centric. And what I would ask you to do when deciding on a site would be to look at each site. Based on how it is going to empower the program of the library. Um, you know, that, that's what I would want you to look at. That would be if I could add a filter to the process. You know, that would be the one I would want you to, to use to, when you look at both sites, think how it either. Imp, how it impacts the program and what we're going to do at the library and how it's going to impact people. You know, based on what we've designed and what we want as a community to have. Um, I don't, I think both places have pros and cons. I think they're both can make wonderful libraries. As long as we address any issues and make sure that we are making the site, I guess, work with the program.
Okay.
I think I would also add, sorry, I would also add that you want to keep in mind that, um. What is, what is it that you want for future Rockport? You know, when you take in consideration those, those, um, site considerations. Because I think that's very important. I think it's important, uh, to the people that we try to attract, to bring in. You know, you heard Charlton talk about, well, we'd like to expand and see, you know, multi-generational Rockport, not just Rockport for retirees. And I would agree with that, you know, um, so I think that would be something that would be key for, for you to, to keep in mind.
Well, I, I certainly invite you and, and hope that you are able to come to subsequent meetings where you would be writing and making sure that we ask the right questions.
I was saving this for the planning, community planning meeting, but I think it's important that when you decide what your recommendation is for the site for the library. This issue is about deciding where the library goes, but I think it's equally as important that you at least provide some of the alternatives of what's going to happen to the other parcel.
Yes.
Should the library not go there.
We have pledged to do that.
Yeah.
And that's be an exact answer, but at least these are a list of the alternatives.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I would just say that there was another, um, question from the audience, uh, which is, hopefully it's been answered. Um, but it has to do with, uh, is discussion of square, uh, footage, uh, reduction premature when you haven't selected which site? Uh, we're, A, we got to look at it at some point, we have to look at the program material at some point and we might as well do it now. And, um, the question goes on to say, uh, uh, hence square footage of programable space. So, um, this question has to do is whether the site.
Hence square footage.
Can handle the program material and that's certainly something we'll deal with in the site meetings.
Yeah, and I don't envy you to, I mean, you all.
That's going to be a long meeting.
Yeah, I mean, really, and, and you, when you put the two sites side by side, you're really in a rock and a hard place. And because you could easily overbuild this site. Really, if you're going to build the right library, you might overbuild this site. Doesn't mean you can't do it, but you might.
Do you feel that Reed's two-story building was overbuilding the site?
I do not believe so at all. No, I think the plan that we got to with the Ad Hoc Library Plan and Reed, that would, that would have been the ideal library for Rockport. I, I, that would have given us the flexibility to do so much for the community. Um, and, and I, I fully understand you don't often get the ideal. And I know we're stepping back from that, but I will be on record saying that. I, I really do think that that was, that would have been the perfect library for this town.
You, Rick?
Yes.
It occurs to me that, I've seen it over in the town office, but there's a picture of that lot when it had the, I think it's called Central Hotel. Yep, which was like three stories high and right up against the front corner of the bill, of the, of the lot, so.
Yeah, and I mean, and that's the thing, a, a library of this size at RES, you should have a plan to do more there. I, I think the library would be a great beginning, but I do not think that it should be the end. The same with here. I mean, a lot of people talk about doing the library here, one of the main problems is parking. Well, I think parking is a Rockport issue, not just a library issue. And so while the library is a good place to start, I don't think it's the place to stop. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues when it comes to the two sites and, uh, you know, I would just urge again that you, you look at program. So, I mean, there's a lot of issues when it comes to the two sites, and, you know, I would just urge again that you, you look at program when you think about that.
Okay, I think we're pretty much to the end of our session this evening. Unless we have any more really pressing questions?
Just thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate this.
Pretend we can smart, Ben.
So.
Practice.
With that, look forward to seeing everybody back Wednesday night at seven PM. So, thank you very much.